Water Management District, when you're doing rates on irrigation and regular water, they pretty much mandate you have tiered rates. The more you use and the more burden you put on the system, the more you're going to pay. And in some cases, that will result in reduced water use. And we're actually hoping that this sticker shot, when people sees it results in lowering of their actual water use, so hey, the impact to their bill's not going to be then high. You know, they have an ability to cut back some of that discretionary.
Unlike water and sewer, that you cannot do much with. You use what you use. You can't cut back on the irrigation. And I know walking down our street, we've got people that are watering five days a week. They won't anymore.
Well, and in some studies that I've read, when you look at price elasticity with the incomes and water and raising irrigation rates, typically less than 20% of the people respond. And one of the quotes I read is the guy said, "I pay my lawn man $200 a month. What do I care about a $200 water bill?"
Yeah. Well, it's something we should be considering in accepting this, whether we feel comfortable with that amount of increase, knowing that it's a part of our plan and, you know, it's tied to our, what we need. Or would we accept maybe splitting that? You know, 30%, this year, 30% next year, getting to a 65% increase after year two in 2021.
I think if you look at it, and I agree, you say 65%, you go, wow, 65%. But the true dollar amounts of that is not that great.
No, and most people may not even realize.
Exactly.
I mean, unless you, like a gentleman, because it's in the agenda and it says 65%, that's what people are going to jump out.
Right.
So I'm bringing it up just want to make sure that it was considered.
And when we talk.
Part of the process.
We have Darrell Parker here, our rate consultant from Willdan, and he's going to start and just kind of briefly go over the rate side of it. We'll spend more time on the connection fees. And then we'll ask the board to set the public hearing date. But I think that's something that we'll get into some detail for a minute and look at what we put together that made this irrigation rate what it is.
Let's just make sure we've got a good, a good story to tell in the public hearing.
So with that, Darrell?
Yeah, I think it's the 21st, right? Not the 28th.
21st, yes.
21st, February.
Do we have a PowerPoint queued up? Over to the right, right there. Perfect. It'll pull up. There we go.
You doing connection?
Okay. Oh, that was last year. I sent you a recent.
You need the January 3rd, 2019?
Yeah. I didn't change that. Oh, okay. I've got it on my laptop if that'd be easy.
We wouldn't know the difference.
Well, it's in the agenda too.
The slides are in there. They've changed very minor. Do you want me to grab my laptop or will that help at all? We'll be quick.
Which version? The January 3rd version?
Yeah.
That's what's in the agenda. That's the, you can just use that.
Is that a PowerPoint or something?
Yeah, it's just the slides, yeah.
Okay. It's not the whole thing. It's a silly. It's hard copy?
It's just hard copy.
Yeah, it's abbreviated. It's not the whole study. You want to work on this or you want to pull up your laptop and put it on a thumb drive and put it on?
Yeah, I'll grab it right now.
Can we do any other action items while we're waiting?
I guess that's not a bad idea. We can do the Pelican Reserve Downs by the mission.
Sure.
B. You found it?
Yes.
Oh, never mind.
get started. Good afternoon, Board. I'm Darrell Parker with Willdan Financial Services, and thank you guys for having me. And of course, as you've heard, we're going to talk about the rate study that we did, the water sewer irrigation rate study first, and then we're going to talk about the connection fee study. The rate study information you guys have seen before, although as you saw from the data, it's been a while. But, so we'll kind of move through that quickly, or if you want to slow down, let me know. If you have any questions, I heard some of the discussion already, so we can discuss some of those in more detail. I'll spend a little more time on the connection fees because you haven't seen that yet. So we'll address any questions on that as well. Do you want me to do the clicker or?
It's up to you.
That's the impact fee part of the, excuse me, connection fees. We want the rate study. Yeah, that's the other presentation. Yeah, it won't be part of that. It's a whole separate document. We may want to let Leslie bring that into us. I think she's pulling it up right now.
Yep.
That looked like the right cover, but just the stuff behind it is not the right.
Okay.
We're going to get there. And part of the reason I want to have the whole thing available, in case you guys do have some discussion questions about some of the individual rate components, for example, the irrigation rate. That looks like the one.
Good. Will that reach over here? I can run it.
Perfect. Okay, get it up there.
I have a question. All the, all the numbers on this report, it says monthly base charges even though we bill bi-monthly. Is that correct?
Well, those would be the monthly numbers, yes. It just, it seemed to, right. So for bi-monthly billing, those numbers would be times two. Yeah. Real quickly, we're here again, especially this upfront stuff we're going to run through pretty quick. You guys have seen the rate study objectives. We've got a five-year financial plan in here. We're making some adjustments for industry standard consistency and that type of thing. Of course, our, our main goal is full cost recovery. We want to make sure the utility is generating sufficient revenues to meet expenditure needs. Darrell, I interrupt you for one moment. And it's really echoing Mr. Guy's question because when we talked about 15% R and R reserve, you know, and then it's going into restricted fund, irrigation water, wastewater. Is that an industry standard, do you find? It's, it's, yes, definitely consistent with industry standards. Typically, the, the R and R reserve is, it's going to be somewhat driven by your capital improvements program, your CIP, but really the reserve itself is going to be just here, kind of what you mentioned, kind of a war chest, kind of a holding place for money. That, that doesn't mean that, that if some year you need money from one to go to another that you're precluded from doing that. You can still do that. Now, where, where you don't want to co-mingle necessarily is when we talk about the connection fees, because you are required to have a separate connection fee reserve for each because, for example, the water connection fee money that comes in from new connections, you don't want to use that money for wastewater projects or for irrigation projects.
What do you want to use it for?
For water.
Water for water.
Yeah, water for water, sewer for, so, so those actually are legally restricted reserves from the connection fees. What Chris is talking about from the 15%, from a budgeting standpoint, I think what the utility is just looking to do is say, okay, we need to make sure that we're putting money in each bucket so that we've got it available when we need it.
You don't want to be unduly restrictive.
You don't, sure. And, and, and from a, from a, from a budgeting standpoint, you're exactly right. You, you want to be able to, to move that money around within that R and R fund. The R and R fund is, is to, is basically to pay for those projects that are associated with depreciation and, and deterioration of your facilities. They're not adding new capacity. They're not generating new customer growth, but they've got to be done to maintain the current level of service that you provide now. So, so yes, you don't want to be overly restrictive, but I think what Chris is looking at doing is just making sure that, that there is a pot of money for each available. If you run out in one, sure, you can transfer from another. All right, you're welcome. This is just kind of a visual of what the rate study looks like. The top part, the green part being revenues. Revenues come from customer accounts and their flows. And then we look at the revenues under existing rates. We factor in any other revenues, and we put those over the expenditures, which are going to be your operating and maintenance expenses, your debt service, any capital needs, any other transfers or expenditures. To the extent that the, the top is, is not large enough to fund the bottom, then we have to do something different with, with the rates. And we'll see a little bit of that here. The existing rate structure, this is no, nothing new to you guys. Base charges, minimum charge, and then the volumetric rates per thousand gallons, very consistent with industry standards. The, the minimum charge that the base charge is, is based on the size of the meter. Here again, very consistent with industry standards. We did a little bit of tweaking on that just because it looks like over the years, just some rounding has occurred to get them just very slightly off, but we're fixing that. The bigger thing that we're doing is on the volumetric rates for the water. And I'll, I'll talk a little bit more about that in a little bit, but the, the blockings for, for the, for the, what we call inclining block rates or water conservation rate structure. We're going to talk about adjusting those blockings to promote water conservation, to more, more, more greatly promote the water conservation aspect. Okay, it's working for me. All right, good. Wastewater rates, very consistent with industry standards, same with the irrigation, just some blockings. The base charges that we talked about here, again, these are, these are set, they're shown on a monthly level. The, as I mentioned, incremented by meter size, which is what we want to see. The volumetric rates, you can see the residential, there's that, what we call the inclining block structure. As you hit certain thresholds of flow, the rate per thousand gallons goes up. And commercial has a two-block structure, irrigation has a three-block structure. Wastewater is not conservation structured, which is the norm. We don't typically see a conservation rate for wastewater. So here are some of the rate structure changes we're going to be talking about. As we mentioned, the, the base charge or that minimum monthly charge, we're, we're not changing anything. We're just kind of doing a little bit of tweaking to get it right back in line with the American Water Works Association, AWWA equivalency factors. The volumetric rates, as I'm going to show in a minute, we want to promote that conservation aspect a little bit more. As Chris mentioned, you know, you've got to kind of keep an eye out for your consumptive use permit. The Water Management District is, is going to look at that, and you've got to have things in place that promote that conservation effort. Just real quick, the, the base charge factors, you can see the column there that says AWWA, that's American Water Works Association. That's the, the norm in the industry. What you've got in place is very, very close, so as I mentioned, just slight tweaking there.
Did you see what those tweaking, two was 10, wasn't it? And three was 20 or something like that?
I'm not following you?
Because one, two and a half, five, eight, didn't it go on ours current, one, two, five, five?
They're, they're to the right. It was just like, instead of 2.5, it's 2.501. And yeah, very, very close. I mean, this is just, here again, probably something that happened, you know, just changing the rates and rounding. Nothing of, of any equitable concern at all. All right, now here's where we're talking about the, the block rates. You can see in that existing, these are just the factors. This is using that block one rate as our base of one, and then doing the, the division for every other rate above that. Block two is about 33% more, and then it goes up a third, a third, a third. And so what we're saying is like, well, let's make that block two rate the 50% factor, and then a two times and 2.5, just to, to greater incentivize your customers to conserve water. And of course, the commercial will be directly in line with the, with the residential based on the, the one times and the 1.5. Now here's kind of getting a little more specific about, you know, what Chris was talking about earlier too, is we're looking at cost to service here. So this is one of the reasons why we're breaking these things out into the different components. As you can see, right now, the, and remember, we're, we're already into fiscal 2019 now, but when this was first done, it was leading up to that point. So based on, on the budget and based on our customer growth projections, flow assumptions, the revenues for water were going to come up a little bit short. Wastewater is in good shape, and irrigation is coming up short. So that was one of the reasons for the irrigation change. And, and there was discussion about ramping that irrigation number up, but kind of what we looked at is it's so low now compared to, compared to the rest of the state, compared to the industry norm for, for irrigation rates, that we just, as a group, said, well, let's make that change now. It'll still be pretty low by comparison to other utilities, but at least let it, let's get it back up to where, arrange where it ought to be.
Jeff, are you ready?
Yes, sir. And so, yeah, the 65% sounds like a lot, but as I heard discussion, in real dollars, it's not really that much. I mean, we're talking, you know, roughly 20 cents per thousand gallons, so $2 a month for a 10,000 gallon irrigation customer.
Sometimes I think we'd be better off if we didn't put percentages in our.
I agree, yeah. Yeah, you're right. Sometimes, yeah, percentage numbers can, can make it look worse than, than the reality. So anyway, so overall, I mean, you know, these are the, the red numbers at the bottom, the differences, these are not insurmountable. These are numbers that, that we're able to correct and, and just maintain some, some, basically some, I guess you'd call it capital inflationary numbers moving forward to, to keep up with the, with the increasing costs. And we'll see that in a little bit. Customer growth, you can see based on the historical trends and based on what we're projecting, you guys are still pretty good with, with customer growth in all three systems, so that's good. So we're going to generate some additional revenues just from having new customers. So for the, for the proposed 2019 rates, now, remember when, when we first did this study, we were envisioning these rates going into effect on October 1, but because of some other things that were going on, you know, within your district, you decided to postpone that. So sounding now like this is going to be more of a February implementation.
March.
March, March implementation. So, so those would be the new numbers. You can see that existing and proposed hasn't changed that much. So we're not, and we'll do some bill comparisons here in a minute, so we're not looking at big differences. The biggest difference is if you're a, a high water user, you can see, you know, those, the top-tier blocks, those blocks four and blocks five, those numbers go up quite a bit. That's because we're intentionally trying to send that signal, like, if you're that high of a user, you need to cut back a little bit. And if you don't, you pay for it. So that's the goal there.
I'd like to ask a question on the proposed base charges.
Yes, ma'am.
The base charges are going down?
No, that's, that, that happened only for irrigation because the, the, the factors were off. And I'll go back real quick and show you that. And I'll step over to the board and point to it. That may not help because you can't see that, can you? If you look at irrigation, the far right column, where those numbers would be 2.5, 5, they're, for some reason, they're doubled. And so we cut those back to be consistent with water or wastewater. Not sure how they got to that point.
So on page 14, the proposed base charges?
Yep.
And, and under irrigation?
Mm-hmm.
The proposed is lower.
Under one inch.
Right, only once you, yeah, because, because the factors were off right now, they, they were, for example, instead of that, that factor, the, the way the factors work is whatever that, that 5/8, 3/4 inch meter is, that standard meter, the, the next meter size is that rate times the factor.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's what happened. And, and the factors were off for irrigation. I, I should have explained that in a little more detail.
That's fine. I just wanted to make sure I, they weren't, they're on call.
Right, right.
Make sure I understood what I was reading.
Yeah, no, I appreciate the question. So we looked at the volumetric rates, and, and you can see, for example, that block one rate for the irrigation in the far right, and it's currently 31 cents per thousand. We're bumping that up to 50. 50 cents per thousand for, for reclaimed water, for irrigation water is still pretty low for the, within the state. So that, that was why we just decided as a group, well, let's just go ahead and get it there. Now, if you as a board say, well, let's do that over two years, sure, we can make that adjustment as well. And from a, from a revenue standpoint, it will have an impact. It wouldn't have, let's say, it wouldn't have a material impact. It's not going to impact your financial stability or your, your coverage enough to, to be that big of a concern. Typical bill comparisons, we put the typical bill at average around that 6,000 range, but you can see at different levels of flow, this would be the standard residential customers. At 6,000 gallons, their water bill goes up 49 cents a month. Obviously, for, for higher users, since we adjusted those, those rate differentials for those higher blocks, the, the larger users, water hogs, if you will, are going to pay incrementally more.
This is a good visual. And this, if I'm a resident, and on average, you know, if this is what my, my monthly flow is, then, okay, I look at that reasonably. If I'm an overwater, but this is something, you know, would be good to maybe get out or have as a handout or something. This simplifies it quite, quite a bit.
For those of you who don't have the advantage of having the city of Fort Myers provide your water, my last bill for 3,700 gallons was $95.45.
Water, sewer only, or including irrigation?
No, not including.
Water and sewer only?
Water and sewer, $95 a month for 3,700 gallons.
Irrigation is coming.
What?
Irrigation is coming.
Well, make sure we get, at the public hearing, make sure we get some Pelican representatives to come up and talk about it. They would love to be on this new rate study.
What else? Trying to, what I'm heading, board members, is that we have nothing to be.
Apologize for?
Apologize is the word I was looking for. We don't have anything to apologize for on these rates, either the current ones or the proposed ones. As a matter of fact, if I were in charge of everything, I'd put a 3%, 4%, 5% increase on these water rates every year in order to build up these reserves that, that we need. It was still going to be low.
Low.
I know, when the house I lived in before I lived in Gateway, the irrigation system was potable water. And you want to talk about being expensive. We're lucky to have reclaimed water.
Here's the same slide, the wastewater version here again, not much of increases. Combined bill. So the, you know, the total impact is not significant. Your comment about the 3%, 4% a year, we're actually going to see that in, in an upcoming slide because you've got a capital program that's driving at, you know, need for, for new expenditures, for new debt. And so we factored those into our five-year plan. And so you'll, you'll see something very similar. There's just kind of a visual of that typical bill. You can see that for the higher-end users, the increase is more. The comparison with your, your neighbors. So where, where'd you say you were, Fort Myers?
Yep.
There you are.
That's a good visual, too. Number one.
Those two together, see?
So even, even with the, the changes that we're talking about to the rates, that typical customer, 6,000 gallons a month, you're still going to be that, the lowest in that group. And, yeah, so that's, that's nothing to apologize for, I guess. You're exactly right. That was a good way to put it. Just kind of moving forward, now this is a summary of the five-year projections. This is the combined system. And what we're seeing here is, you know, we, we do have, especially if you, if you look at that, that debt service line kind of toward the bottom third of the, of the, of the visual here, that debt service number is going up. You're, you're going to be, based on the projections and the discussions we've, we've had with staff, you're going to be taking on some new SRF loans to fund projects, and so that's driving part of this. O and M is going to go up just as you add customers, as inflationary impacts at your operating system. So, so there's going to be a need for some additional rate adjustments, and as you can see, actually, we're not having to do anything else on the irrigation because we kind of got them.
But why wouldn't we? To Bill's point, if we're still, I would say, significantly, significantly below upper limits in the comparison, why wouldn't we tack on 20, from 2020, 2021, a 3% increase or a 2% increase, even if it's nominal?
Right. No, you could. Yeah, and it would just, it would improve the financial picture. You can see what, what we were shooting for here was, you know, just kind of staying positive. Your debt service coverage is good. It was almost one of those situations where, okay, if we get the irrigation where we want it to be now, we don't have to mess with it again for a while. But that doesn't mean that you wouldn't. What, what it would actually probably help offset, and since it's kind of a water-to-water comparison, maybe the, the water 4% number comes down to 3% if you.
Yeah, I, you know, just because you got 2, 3, 4%, it might, might make sense just to be really simple.
Yeah, and that's definitely a scenario we, we can look out for you guys if you'd like to see those numbers.
Definitely like to see that.
Okay. And we can have that, plenty of time for you to make that decision.
Even if for, like Bill, even if we keep everything like it is and just add a 2% onto irrigation?
If I were doing it, I'd add 3% or 4% on, on all.
Across the board. Go 3% across the board, then you could drop.
They're so small, they're so small, nobody's going to complain about it.
And it also builds a, builds a behavior that.
But over a period of time, it gives you what you need. So you don't have to go into debt service and borrow a lot of money and pay interest on it.
I absolutely agree.
I agree, thank you.
And I, I just, just to, as a reminder, that won't impact the, the rates we're asking you to adopt in, in the next year.
Sure. I would be comfortable, like, 3% across all the, all the channels. Instead of like 3, 4. And if we do 2, let's just make it easy and say, we're going to go 3%, just expect a 3% increase or the annual raise in, in water, wastewater and irrigation.
If I had my laptop up here right now, we can do it right now, but I can get that.
Anyone have an issue with that?
Mr. Banks, one thing that private utilities do that are regulated by the Public Service Commission is they can get an automatic pass-through each year. They do a calculation based on the Consumer Price Index, and so if you're a private utility, and one of the reasons they do that is they know their chemical and personnel and costs are going up. So instead of waiting five years and getting a 5, 10, 15% rate increase, when they're doing it 1.5, 2.5 over that period, you know, it's people's bill goes up 30, 40 cents and they don't mind versus five years. What do you mean?
Well, that's just in time.
I think that's what the gentleman was a-hoody to earlier.
Yeah.
That's how we got to where we're at. Because we didn't do it. That's how we got to where we're at, because we didn't do it.
And the, I don't know if any of you folks read a magazine called Florida Trends, but it in the last issue, it gives a lot of current and historical information about how Florida got to where we are as far as water usage, and the the people who set the rules are going to be under increasing pressure to have folks like us keep our customers using as little as as humanly possible, because those wells are getting are drying up.
Send a pricing. Some respond, some don't.
That is true. All right, we'll keep moving. This is just a graphic illustration of what those percentage adjustments that we saw on the previous slide would look like on a combined water and sewer bill moving forward.
Did you do anything to show up any type of a bell curve to show that six thousand gallons? Is that how you came up with that, or did you just say that that's a national average?
No, no, that's kind of kind of the average for for your system. Yeah, it was in that in that range, but six thousand is kind of a a normal comparison point as well for the industry, but it kind of depends on where you are, too.
I know on mine, mine runs between ten and eleven on a two-month deal, so.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
And I don't have any kids.
Well, and that's the thing, obviously, larger households are are going to run more, yeah.
Well, they they can take shorter showers.
Amen.
I'll let y'all fight that battle.
Turn it off on your brush and your tea.
Hopefully, the conservation rates will will help drive that.
I'm sitting on like kids build your house. Condition them to shorter showers for conservation.
So just to conclude, I think I think we've developed a plan with some manageable adjustments that are going to meet the needs of the new debt and ongoing operating costs and your personnel costs moving forward, but we'll definitely pull that other scenario for you and let you see what the numbers look like. Overall, financial picture is not going to look that much different, but just the rates themselves.
It's nice to have this complete. Another check off.
All right, with that, we'll jump to the connection fee study.
Can I ask you to do everybody?
Yep, that's it. All right.
Was a week, connection fee study in our board?
Yep. Now, as I mentioned, I've not presented this to you guys yet, so we'll probably move a little bit slower. Mr. Tinkle is very familiar with it. He was very instrumental in in our review process and and data gathering.
How lucky you were.
We had quite a few discussions. It went well. But I appreciate any any input I can get because we don't want to put something in front of the board that you guys aren't going to like anyway, so very helpful for us. So we'll start. So when we're talking about connection fees as 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 Gateway calls them, basically, it's a capital-related fee, goes by many different names. I'm sure you guys have heard impact fees, capacity fees, system development fees and all all that, so so sometimes it's just kind of interchangeable how, you know, what terminology you use, but that's what we're talking about here, is that it's it's not an operating-related fee, it's a capital-related fee, and we'll kind of look at some more of the specifics on that. Yeah, I'm still not sure what happened. Yeah, go ahead. So basically, there is legislation in the state of Florida that that guides what we do with these types of fees. Keep going, yeah, all right, you're good. So basically, the legislature, you know, has found that this is an important source of revenue for funding capital projects. Yep, I think I'm back, all right, perfect. And and that governments have the authority to to charge these type types of fees, basically, it's legal, but there are some some things that we have to do to comply with the act when when we're implementing such fees. Have to be based on recent and localized data, so what we used was your existing asset information and the capital improvements program. We're going to talk a lot more about that, but it's specific to your utility system. Here's where kind of what we were talking about earlier, that that the money that comes in from these fees have to be accounted for in a separate fund, and those are illegally restricted fund. So so that was part of the purpose of of having them separated into each individual system as well, so that we know what money came in for water, what money came in for wastewater, what money came in for irrigation, so that we can have that money available for projects specific to those systems. The any administrative charges or have to be limited to the the actual costs. Actually, we're not really including any administrative fees. One of the things that that you're going to see is you can, there's a lot of things that you can include, but there's a lot of things that you cannot include in the calculation, and so we're going to address those as we move forward. And then the ninety days prior to the effective date, and which you guys are addressing that as part of this process now.
So the connection fee has a ninety-day window to initiate rates and a thirty-day window?
Yes.
After the public hearing?
I believe it's, well, it's what it says, and this is, this is right out of the legislation, so ninety days notice before the effective date of the resolution, so so yes, if if the resolution is going to go into effect in, say, April, yeah, we're in that window.
Do you have to have a public hearing?
Yes.
You do have to have a public hearing, yes.
Public hearing. Yes, and I think the other question was the notice requirement for the other rates.
For the?
For the increase in the wastewater water and.
Right.
And potable water.
Right.
It's not the ninety days.
Right.
They're not connection fees.
Right, this is specific to those to the connection fees.
So the other rates can go into effect earlier if.
Oh, they can, yeah, they don't have to wait. That's why these are two separate studies, because they're two totally different fees.
So those fifteen hundred ERUs, you have to come into Gateway, you can come in and pay this, save a thousand, a million and a half bucks at your cost, just by being politically correct in putting this out to the public.
It's called legally correct.
Yeah. I think that's, yeah, I think that's ultimately kind of the purpose of legislation is to.
I think Darryl would say that. Tell them they've checked that, bring it back in the ninety days.
I think that's part of why the legislature adopted this, probably the developers perhaps.
Yes, yeah, the, yeah, the Home Builders Association in Florida is pretty strong, so. Probably not telling you guys anything you don't already know. So so but yes, you're, and and that does happen sometimes, but it's kind of one of those things that, yeah, still have to comply.
And we don't have, I believe, Tony, we have no outstanding IOUs or credits, that we're done with credits.
That's a Steven question, but I think we're done with the question.
Done with credits, aren't we, Steve?
Yes, we are, we're done with credits.
Good.
Yeah, good. Those can be a lot of work.
That was a lot of pop, right?
So there's the the methods we'll talk about for calculation. Basically, we mentioned American Water Works Association earlier. The AWWA is 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 kind of over the decades is kind of helped the the industry develop a framework, if you will, for how to how to do things in an equitable manner and, you know, cost allocations, the meter-based structure we talked about earlier. So there's a a manual called M1 that we use, kind of, it's it's not an end-all-be-all, but it gives us a basis so that if there's ever a legal challenge outside of the legislative rule, we can say, this is where these numbers come from, this is where the methodology comes from. So basically, we've got three different, what we call three different approaches. The buy-in approach includes your existing infrastructure. I mentioned that that that's part of our calculation process. The incremental or marginal cost method, that's your capital improvements program. That's what what projects are you building in the future, what capital items are you building to meet the needs of future growth? And then combine, we can blend those together into a a combined calculation methodology. So in general, what we're talking about here is that one-time upfront fee that's paid to any new customer, paid by any new customer connecting to the system, and could be water, sewer, floor, irrigation.
We might differentiate that this is specifically different, this comes from Gateway, CED, Natchali County, their water and sewer capital connection fee is totally separate.
Totally separate, yes.
And in addition to.
Yeah, in addition, yes.
That was split up back in, so two thousand and eleven, we had the last project, was made sure we differentiated.
Right, yeah, yeah, because, right, and that is, we we are talking about gateway fees specific, and the revenue that'll come into you. So these, I mentioned, are are capital-related costs, and they're basically related to the capacity in your system, because that's what you're providing to customers, is capacity. Helps growth pay for itself, so what that means is it protects your existing customers because those are capital items, those are revenues coming in to pay for capital that your existing customers don't have to fund. So we have what we call recoverable costs. Your 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 CIP might have a lot of different capital items, but we're only going to focus on what's recoverable, not only your CIP, but even your existing assets. Water supply, which will be your your major lines that would would come in from from the county. Water treatment facilities, you guys have some some wells and such right now, not a treatment plant. Storage, major transmission lines, major pumping facilities. Wastewater, similar, any major transmission lines, enforced mains, lift stations, flow equalization, wastewater treatment facilities, disposal. So your planned assets, what we can include are your capital items that are expansion-related, whether it be treatment or new wells or new transmission lines, any system upgrades, major system upgrades that either improve operating efficiency or are required by the regulatory agencies. So now, what's non-recoverable? What can we not include? As part of the CIP, we can't include renewal and replacement, some of the ongoing capital replacement items we talked about earlier associated with depreciation. That's why the budget, that's why it's proposed that the budget, the budget itself include a fifteen percent transfer for those ones, because we can't fund those from these connection fees, so, but we want to have a source of funding for those projects. They don't add new capacity. Any other items that are really not capacity-related, vehicles and equipment, administrative facilities, anything funded from grants or developers, we don't include those projects either, and you'll kind of see where where that kind of shakes out in the calculation process here in a little bit.
That was probably the most difficult calculation without having access to historical data.
That's true.
Limited historical data.
And 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 if nothing else, I think the way our 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 process went, you're probably on the conservative side of the calculation, because there are probably some things that got excluded just because.
There are.
Because of the way the data was available, which, yeah, that's to the benefit of your future customers, but it's, it will probably probably something that that will keep you out of any legal trouble, too.
I was going to say more legally defensible, right?
Right, exactly. So your current situation, the current fees were adopted in 2011, as we heard, called connection fees, as we mentioned, they can be called any number of things, but no need to really change that terminology. They're incremented by meter, meter size, similar to the base charges, which is good. Consistency is great in our industry, we like that. Multifamily is charged by dwelling unit, very consistent with industry standards, especially in Florida, consistent with AWWA standards we talked about.
You might explain, go back that one chart so that everybody understands, because we we got a little problem with that in that, especially on with with water and the reuse, where we have the. Oil Greens, good example, I believe, they have two three-inch meters that if you take your meter scale, what was that, sixty, twenty-four, whatever?
Yeah.
So if you multiply twenty-four times two, it'd be forty-eight. They have three hundred and ten units. So this this stops that. We don't go by the meter, we go by the number of actual units when we have the multifamily.
Right.
So that, we're getting fairness back into that calculation.
Right, and and, yeah, for multifamily, the reason you would do that is because, I mean, for typically for multifamily development, the the nondiscretionary water use, if you will, and direct wastewater impact from that is not that much different from a single-family house. The nondiscretionary being what you need for, you know, cooking, cleaning, bathing, washing clothes and that, so. Obviously, a one-bedroom unit is maybe going to be different than a four-bedroom house, but what you also don't want to do is is be the one that has to, you know, kind of look behind every door and say, well, okay, well, that's one-bedroom, it charges different. It's it's a more of an industry norm to just charge per dwelling unit.
Darryl, I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
If you move into Gateway and you buy an existing home, you call up Leslie and ask to have the water sewer irrigation turned on, do you have to pay a connection fee, or is that already done because it was already paid when the house was originally built?
That's, the connection fee would have already been paid, so you don't pay the connection fee twice. So we talked about our recoverable assets. These are the the buy-in approach, remember, those are the existing facilities. So we had original cost, about almost forty-nine million of assets. The excluded assets, in this case, are anything that, based on the best of our ability, we determine were funded by developers or grants or sources other than the utility itself. So you can see right off the bat, out of almost forty-nine million, a big chunk of that is not recoverable, so we subtract that out, leaves us about eleven point three million in existing assets to recover. The the incremental cost method, the.
Can you just quickly discuss, because we got the school coming. School is exempt from paying this connection fee per their equivalency, correct?
And that's typically a a policy decision, if if you want to exempt government entities. I I I'm not sure how you guys do that now. They are.
If it's policy. I'd say I'd do it, but if it's statutory, I thought we were equipped.
I I'm not sure if that's statutory, I guess we'd have to defer.
Just want to bring that up because that, there is no revenue anticipated from what could be three, four, five hundred ERUs from school.
And that that will be probably either either a statutory or a policy decision at that time.
In fact, we took, as you recall, we took that ERU count out of the.
Those are pulled out of these numbers, yes.
Could you stop there for just one second?
Yes, sir.
Residential units that are restricted to residents, their age restricted over fifty-five, they do not typically pay impact fees to the county, they go to to the, ultimately to school systems. Will they pay the connection fees, though, that you're talking about?
They should, yeah, if they're a new connection to your utility system.
Okay, well, when you when you use, when you use the term impact fees, I wanted to make sure that you're.
Right.
Using the same. You're using the same term, but it's 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 has two different definitions.
Well, and 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 you're right, the thing about impact fees is, is, yeah, they can, there can be other impact fees, there can be fire and police and parks and rec and so so, but there are so are also water and sewer impact fees that that are basically the same as this connection fee.
Yeah, I think, just to follow up on that, that what's required for connection fees and impact fees, system facility.
fees, impact fees, system facility charges, is the, what's called the dual rational nexus text. I won't necessarily get into all that, but with school systems, the age-restricted communities, the rationale as to why age-restricted communities are exempt from paying school system impact fees, connection fees, system facility fees, is there's no impact on the school system because there are no school age-related children in those communities. So, you have no need to expand the physical capacity or infrastructure of the school system.
Doesn't generate an impact.
Because they don't generate any impact on the system. That's why the schools are different. That was decided, I think, Aberdeen case, long, long time ago.
Yeah, but there are different, there are impact fees, and then there are impact fees.
There are, yeah. Schools are unique in age-restricted communities because there is no impact on the infrastructure. There's no need to expand capacity to accommodate the new growth for schools.
Great point, yeah.
I mean, always feel the jump, feel free to jump.
No, no, I, no, I believe that's exactly the rationale. The incremental cost method, so that's your CIP, basically, what's in place right now, almost eleven million dollars over the next five years. Excuse me, I got allergy or something going. So, what we did is we broke those up into these components. It's either an expansion upgrade-related project, which, remember, those are recoverable, or it's renewal and replacement, those deteriorated facilities, those are not recoverable, or it's anything else, administrative vehicles, whatever. So, the majority of your CIP, as it currently exists, is related to expansion or upgrade of your facilities. So, that's, those are recoverable costs. So, those are included in our analysis. So, then, I mentioned that there's the combined method. So, we're using that combined methodology here. The eleven point three million from the buy-in, and you can see, we keep them separated out by system because there's gonna be a different capacity impact for each system. And so, that, we've got the buy-in, the incremental costs, the combined. So, in total, you can see that the water, there's not that much that we're necessarily needing to recover on the water side, more on the sewer, but a lot more on the irrigation. So, that's what's gonna be driving our fee calculation moving forward. This is kind of just a visual. We've got our buy-in, our incremental, we combine those. So, we've got our total capital facility cost. Now, what you're about to see is we make a debt service credit adjustment. You'll see that on the next slide. Excuse me. So, that comes up with our net recoverable facility cost. Question?
That, I think we need to point out that that debt credit is critical, because we were assuming some facility plan SRF funding to create this debt credit. We didn't, we don't go that route. That number is going to jump fast.
Well, and what the debt credit does is, it's based on the outstanding debt. Here, I'll show you. It's the next slide. So, we've got the combined costs, and then what we've looked at is the outstanding...